Everybody, today is Tuesday, September 2nd, 2014. This is our Board of County Commissioners, Picking County, Colorado, work session. And we just spent lunch morning over with the Lake County Commissioners, got to know what was going on over there. And today, we're moving into our afternoon agenda, starting off with a discussion of our next joint county meeting, which is Eagle County. And discussion topics for with them.
Yeah, thanks, Rob. And what we do is we set aside a few minutes on the agenda prior to getting together with your peers in our neighboring counties, just to identify if there are any topics that the board would like specifically placed on the agenda and for staff to prepare for. So what I'd ask staff does have a couple of recommended topics. We can maybe go through those first, if you'd like, or we can go through board ideas and bring those up at the end, depending on what the board's pleasure is.
Why don't you fire off your ideas?
Okay. We have Dale here for the first item, which would be a recommended discussion on some of the joint planning efforts on properties that we've jointly acquired with Eagle County. I believe we thought we might be a little bit farther along specifically on the Glacier Plan, but Dale, do you want to talk a little bit about some ideas that?
Sure. Well, as everyone remembers, we own the Glacier Open Space, which is in Eagle County and subject to a conservation easement they hold. And we've been busy this summer crafting a management plan that will eventually go to their board for adoption, as well as up through our process for adoption. And it's pretty much baked in terms of the trail issue and the agricultural leasing. There's one element to it, though, that is still kind of slowing us down, which is that there's a difference of opinion about having onsite parking for this trailhead up onto the Crown. And some of the neighbors who are Eagle County residents have written us a letter saying under no circumstances do they want to see a piece of the Glacier property devoted to this parking area. So we thought maybe we should bring that up with the two boards and familiarize everyone with the issue before we come back with a final proposed plan. And there's really a couple of different possibilities. There's go ahead and propose it. There's allow people to access this trail from the nearest current parking area, which are ways off the parking right that is on Highway 22 being the closest. Or there's a potential negotiation with a neighbor that has expressed an interest in providing a site. But when John said, "We thought we'd be further along," I've actually gotten an appraisal and the works on that, and we don't have a number yet. So hopefully, we'll have an update on that piece of it at the meeting next week. But it's an interesting situation, planning for an open space property that's sort of a joint county project. So we thought it would be good to just give the boards an update and maybe give the boards an opportunity to chat between them about where they want to see this go.
George?
So because this is a public meeting, we may anticipate that we may have some neighbors there wanting to make some comments. And so I don't know who's chairing the meeting, but I don't want to see, I wouldn't want to see this meeting turn into a one-issue meeting and spend a lot of time, since your board hasn't had a chance to get all the information and give to us. A lot of it's premature. We could take public comments, but I know it may not be the right time to have a real dialogues with the public there. It's just sort of an observation.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I guess what I would hope, though, is that we could start to get some familiarity shared between the two boards about what our basic choices are on this, so.
Rob, can I?
Yeah.
So Dale, was this the same letter sent to the Eagle County Commissioners?
It was received by the open space staff so far, and we want to make it known to both the boards.
So you're going to forward it to them?
Well, it's a question if this is on our agenda, we'll put it in the packet.
I think this sounds like a good topic to, you know, set aside some time for. But George's caution is good, not to, you know, get too into bits on it. There's ongoing processes that involve the public separate from this.
Eagle County had also shot us two other topics, open space, incidentally. Just an update on where we're at was one of their topics. Trails, which I have not nailed down, it's just a general topic of trails. It probably has to do with planning on some of our open spaces, as well as basalt affordable housing opportunities. I think, just like Picking County, Eagle County has a dedicated funding source for affordable housing. And with a community that's starting to become active and potentially developing affordable housing that sits really split between our two counties, you know, some discussion or at least understanding about how our funds are set up, how they can be used, and just trying to identify if there are opportunities for partnerships down there. They had that on their list. I actually had that on my list as an opportunity just to talk, start talking about potential opportunities and the fact that both counties may be looking at basalt for affordable housing in the future. So those were the topics from a staff perspective and from Eagle County also. George?
So Eagle County, fairly recently, last year or so, completed a long-range Mid Valley master plan. And at the last roundtable caucus meeting that staff did in terms of working with our caucuses and updating all of our master plans, the long-range Eagle County planner was there. So I had an opportunity to talk to him about utilizing, recognizing our master plans for any land use applications in Eagle County. And specifically, the two caucuses where the boundaries overlap are the frying pan caucus and the M.O. caucus. And he was receptive to that, and he said he would pass that on to the commissioners. But I'd like to have a short conversation about that. It just makes sense that they understand, as we're going through our updating of master plans, that hopefully that they would recognize what our caucus areas would like to see and not make decisions sort of just based on Eagle County Mid Valley master plan, which they actually have coordinated when they were doing those plans with caucus and with the frying pan caucus. But it seems to be, it would be a good way to tighten all those land use applications and decisions if they come forward to Eagle County, which may affect some of our caucus areas.
Any other agenda items?
Well, let me just ask on that. George, and so that would be a little bit in the context of the full Mid Valley master plan, so we could get a sense of what they're interested in doing, where these don't overlap as well?
No.
I mean, it just seems that might be valuable as a brief.
It can be. Yeah, it can be a sort of an overview, but I'm more concerned about the specific caucus areas that have a, you know, one side of the MRO is the Picking Counties, the other side is in Eagle County, so land use decisions could affect that neighborhood as well as the frying pan. But it'd be good to have an overview.
Yeah, and then go more specific to those areas. Okay, great. That's what I'd like.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good idea. The other question I have or idea is, I know that we've got a presentation from CDOT coming up next week, and they're going to make a presentation to City of Aspen in terms of funding requests. I'm curious whether they're going to make a presentation to Eagle County Commissioners as well. You know, Eagle County is in the heart of the Roaringford Valley.
Rachel?
You know, the thing I thought about was a little bit about the state water plan, but we're really very much as boards, both on the same page. And I don't think there's specific items for that at this time. You know, I don't know if we felt at our last meeting, there was kind of an adequate discussion of the shared services and how that's going and update on the shared human services. Might make some sense, but only if the rest of the board agrees.
Yeah, I'd agree to that. I wouldn't spend too much time on it, you know, and have too much staff down there.
No.
Those departments tend to show up in force for big reports when we ask them to, which is great, but I'm not sure that we need it as a joint meeting, because we're getting very detailed reports from Eagle County and the services that they provide, whether it be child welfare or whatnot.
Yeah, only if there's issues and is going to need direction on, or, you know, things we see upcoming in the legislative session that we want to touch base with them.
Yes, we're sitting here. One other topic that I think would be short, but I believe that they're looking at disposition of some of the tree farm property along the river. Last time we talked, I think that process has been moving forward. It might be good to get an update.
Yeah.
You're right, John.
And then, you know, as we have before, we can just let know more about our specific issues for CCI, to the extent there's time left. Because they're the ones who already are doing something a little bit with their ambulance district. That would be particularly valuable conversation.
Okay. Got it. Next, we are going to have our annual Fly Quiet Report. Jim Elwood and his staff, his entourage of airportees are all here. And I will first mention that this is Jim's last day with us. We will be celebrating later out at the airport. Or
Or mourning.
Mourning later out at the airport. But like I said in our last meeting, Jim, that you were here for the four years that I've served on the board, it's been a pleasure hearing, working with you, having presentations with you and your professionalism. I'm sure Jackson Hall is going to be greatly valued, your services up there. And we will miss your services. We will survive and go on, of course, but we will definitely miss your services here. So thank you for all your hard work that you've put in over the years that you've been here.
Well, thank you for those kind words, Mr. Chair. If you'll indulge me at the very end, I'd like to say thanks to several people along the way. So today is our annual Fly Quiet Program report. Joining me today include Paul Dunhalter from BridgeNet. Paul's quite exceptional at doing analysis off of noise. He's been involved at the airport for quite some time. And if there's one thing I've learned about noise is that it is, it is a science, but it is also an art form coupled together. And Paul puts those two pieces together extraordinarily well. Addition to that is Rick Dunkelberg. Rick is a Renaissance man, as you've seen him many times on several subjects, including environmental and noise. He's with, or, excuse me, Mead and Hunt. His previous principal role was at a company in his namesake, so I'm sorry, I almost slipped up there, Rick.
That's okay.
Mead and Hunt, they're going to go through this program. I also want to introduce Brian Greifey, Assistant Director for Administration at the airport, who's working quickly on the electronics part of today's presentation. Before I turn it over to Rick to kind of do some transitionary comments, I want to point out that this has been an extraordinarily successful program. Part of that was kind of the timing of the last few years and some changes in aircraft and other things. But I also think it's been a focal point since I arrived 13 years ago, that, you know, the community was concerned about noise and the impacts of the airport on their lives. And so it's been a prime focus for us throughout this past 10-plus years. So I think the conditions have generally improved. As a matter of fact, substantially improved for almost the entire community, in spite of some changes that have occurred at the airport. So I think it's one of those points where you can say paying attention mattered, and we also were fortunate that the aircraft fleet changes have also benefited the timing of all of this as well. So I'm going to turn it over to Rick and let him continue the discussion.
Thank you, Jim. As you all know, the county has been involved in this Fly Quiet Program for a number of years. And it's a very unique program, especially for this size and type of airplane. It's a voluntary program which you all have undertaken. And one of the very unique parts about it is that we in this community are concerned about aircraft noise levels and noise metrics, which are very different than the federal standard. We've all talked about the DNL metric, day-night noise level, which is the federal standard for identifying land use compatibility and noise effects. Well, this community has looked beyond that metric. And one of the really unique things here is that Paul has developed through this program some other metrics to look at, in addition to the traditional DNL, to help us evaluate the success of the program. And so it's kudos to you all for letting us have that kind of program and taking ownership of that. And as Jim said, it's been very successful for a number of reasons. Paul will get into the dynamics of it. And please, if you have any questions when Paul's talking, raise your hand, because he gets kind of nerdy here if you don't watch him.
Too many acronyms.
That's right. Okay, Paul, I have to.
And how do we advance when we?
I think we touched right here.
There's a little remote control.
Okay. Right. So you've all seen the PowerPoint, but do you have the ability to see it as we go through it, or you'll?
Yeah, we have copies of it in front of us.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Highest chair have chosen not to move from this seat throughout my year, so.
Okay, so I'll run through a little bit of background on the program. You don't get to see it every day, so once a year. I know you're all very familiar with it, but just a refresher again. And a part of it is we do noise monitoring, summer and winter, for a couple of weeks each time period, sort of in the peak season around Christmas, around Fourth of July. We also collect radar data full-time at the airport and operational data, so we have a better indication of what goes on year-round. And we also have one monitoring site we leave in Woody Creek pretty much year-round. So that's what we have in place. And then, as far as the program, it's, well, what can the airport do to try and influence getting quieter planes and overall reducing the noise and totality around the airport? And the Fly Quiet Program is trying to influence that, getting it quieter, acknowledge those that do a better job than others, and then track it over time to see if there's benefits or things getting worse or things not getting worse. And we've had some of both happening, and we'll go over it here. And one of the big things that did happen over time, though, it's again switched out, is the Piaggio became a very loud, irritating airplane because of one operator coming. It was a turboprop plane with a push-pull. You've probably all heard that there and things. And for your sake, in some benefit, they went out of business. So they really dropped off. There's still some private operators here, but it's not like it was for a while. And that did become a problem that cropped up during the middle that we adapted the Fly Quiet Program for. So there's different elements of it. What we're measuring is what's the annual levels, not so much day-to-day, but an overall trend to show change over time. And we're trying to acknowledge the best operators, and then, really, this relates to corporate jet traffic, or corporate jets, or those large turboprops. And there would be what we call the Part 135 operators, which are like the fractional people, so net jets, where you, people buy time to be in an airplane. And those are, some of them, there's lots of them, like NetJets has 4,000 a year operations here, so quite a bit. So some don't have that many. So we broke it into those that have a lot and those that have a little bit less. And then there's the third category, which is those individual operators, someone that owns their own plane, or corporation that has their own plane that comes in and out of here. And they would usually fly as a tail number, like N1234, or whatever. So that's a way of kind of differentiating them. And so in different categories, we tried to group them up as to who's doing well, who's not doing quite as well. Some of the elements are fleet quality, which is how loud is that individual plane in its certification level or in its manufacturer level? Is it a louder plane or a quieter plane? You all remember the Gulfstream 3s, which are the really loud ones. You could hear them take off at the valley almost crackles as the sound goes. And then the newer generation like the Citation X and all that are quite quiet, you know, significantly quieter. And then, and we'll also do it, just not by certification, but what we measure in the community as well. So what do the monitors tell us? And we track who's most improved. Is there someone that went, an owner that switched out their planes and got better planes and acknowledged those people? So the fleet quality, and this is a kind of a complicated graphic, but just to show that they, when a plane's manufactured, the airplane is certified in terms of how loud it is from a takeoff, a landing, and a sideline noise. So it's a way of measuring, comparing different types of planes. So we take that and use that to rate how loud planes are here. And those that rate well, which is really taking into account its sideline, takeoff, approach noise, and summing it up really into one, and comparing that to each of them and seeing who's better or who's worse. So it's not exactly how they fly, per se, but it's how it's manufactured. But it's a good way of having a standard to work from.
What are the red lines on the graph?
The red would be what's called a stage-two categorization. The FAA says if you were above that, you would be stage-two or a louder plane. If you're below it, you're a quieter plane. And so if you look at that top plane on the graphic, that's a Citation that's quite a bit below that stage-two limit on all three takeoff, sideline, approach, where the Beech Jet is just barely it. And their determination is the sum of all three. That's why it would be considered a stage-three plane, even though it's right up against So part of the program is to track how many of the quieter planes are flown versus the louder planes. So we came of kind of a school score, 10 to 0, 10 being best, 0 being the worst. And it really is a way to make a complicated numbering system into something a little more understandable. So green was what we said was really good, average is that middle range, and then below would be the yellow. So if we take the operators, these are fractional operators that tend to operate quite a few airplanes. And we're acknowledging those, then, that were at the best. You'll see, most of the fractionals do fairly well now, that they tend to are a newer business line, so they've tended to buy newer planes. So you tend to have a little bit of that. And the newer ones tended to have the newer jets. And all that were operating them here, Exojet, JetSuite, Bombardier Flexjet, Business Jet Solutions, and EAC were the ones that did the best. And then we compared it, how they changed over time, did they get better or worse? And then the ones down at the bottom were the two travel management, Avatar, I can't even say it right, Avatar is the one that used to fly that, the Piaggio plane that was really loud. And we did a similar sort of analysis for the smaller operators, similar results, but you have a different level of indication of different names of people. And on the left-hand side of that graphic, you'll see an airport-wide value of the average of all the planes. We had of the 0 to 10, a 7.6 number. Last year was a 7.3, and our baseline, when we started this program, was a 6.7. So you can see it's, using this scaling system, a rating system of manufactured planes, you're seeing quieter planes coming in over time.
It might be interesting to the board that what we did here was, had not been done prior. So we had to create some benchmarks and then start to be able to measure against them. The first years of the Fly Quiet Program, we took, you know, certain measurements, but at some point, we had to kind of develop some methods to be able to determine benchmarking for year over year. So to my knowledge, we were one of the first in the nation to create.
Really, for corporate jets, you were the first to do something like this. So now, other airports are starting to copy it as a means of trying to measure how things change over time.
I have a question.
Sure.
What are the other variables, other than aircraft, that create a variance in the noise on these things? I mean, are there, I would assume that we're not telling pilots how to fly, but are there pilots that are throttle-heavy and throttle-light?
Yes.
That aren't, that aren't taking their approach properly, that they're coming from a different direction? I mean, what are the variables that create?
So variables could be one, other traffic. So if someone's coming in on approach and he's needing to make sure he maintains his speed, he may have to add power or something, or he may, if there's no traffic out there, he may be able to do more of a gliding approach coming in. So there's a lot of that variability. Weather, you know, if it's a nice, clear day and he sees everything, there's no wind versus a strong, gusty wind type of situation and intermittent clouds, you may have differences. Departure will be the weight of the plane. If he's got a longer flight distance, if he's going to Centennial versus going to
Taking more fuel on.
Yeah, more fuel. He's got a lot of passengers on there. Summer versus winter, we don't see a big difference in the noise, per se, but in the summertime, you know, the air is thinner, the plane doesn't climb out as well, so he will be a little bit lower. Though it turns out, you generates, the engines generate slightly less noise in thinner air than in thicker air, so it tends to balance out a little bit. But, and then just pilot technique.
So, and I guess, I guess this leads into my second question, which is, you know, how do we use those variables to create better noise ratings year in, year out? Do we educate the pilots to say, you know, "Do your approach this way," or "Don't take on as much fuel?" And I'm not saying that we should be doing this. I'm just saying, the numbers, the numbers that we don't have any control over don't really do us much good looking at them. A pilot comes in and he has to avoid an accident, so he throttles up to avoid an accident. A pilot comes in and he has to avoid an accident, so he throttles up to avoid an accident, make all the noise you want to make, you know, avoid the accident. I don't want to be penalizing a carrier, you know, a Net Jets or whoever, for something like that. I want to take those variables out of this equation. And is the, is this, is this analysis that sophisticated, or is it just not?
You want to answer it or you want to?
Well, let me, let me give a historic note you can add in, Paul. Is that when, when our Fly Quiet Committee started to look at this, there was, there was interest in reducing noise, but not at the risk of lowering.
Sure.
And so, the focal points of, that came from, from the committee and direction, quite honestly, from this board over time was, we want to improve the condition, but we don't want to do things that aren't smart. So the focal point has really been on, on monitoring the events and then being able to give feedback to those flight crews. If they have a valid reason for doing what they need to do, we should not, as an airport, tell them how to fly the airplane. But what we can do is remind them that there's a community below them that are being impacted by the decisions and choices that they're making, and would they please be, and acknowledge that impact? And to do what they can. And so that was, that was the process. And as we, we started to move through, we follow up on all those noise complaints that we do get, by the way, but the, it was then to start to communicate with the flight crews directly and create a dialogue that I think has been healthy overall. And if, if circumstances require whatever that is, then, you know, we have, as a community, it's been pretty understanding. However, if you've got a quieter airplane in the hangar and you can choose to fly it that day, please do so.
Change of aircraft is a direct thing that they could do.
And Paul, we'll go into in a few minutes, and we've also sent letters based on these metrics to those really good operators.
Thank you.
And said, you know, thanks for being aware. We're just grateful. You know, those that didn't score very well, we've also sent them letters and said, your peers are doing better than you are, you know, and we're still out here, and please do, you know, whatever changes you can account for. So it's, we've really, you know, in these kind of programs, you're faced with a circumstance where you can either take a stick to the event, or you can take some carrots and some, you know, more positive perspective. We felt, over time, the best path would be in the positive reinforcement and remind those that maybe aren't doing as well, that they could elevate their game.
And as an example, like Net Jets has about five planes in their fleet. Someone that, that purchases time with them can choose the plane they want to fly in here. We'd like them to know that the Citation is quieter than the Beech Jet, you know, that would be a better plane for you to pick, if you have a choice.
Yeah, Rachel.
You know, Jim, just thinking about this, I wonder whether there is a way to connect this information with rating companies that may rate, you know, if you're thinking about buying a timeshare with a jet, and you're looking at this large selection of different companies you could buy from, you know, whether, you know, that they got a gold seal from the Aspen Airport for the Fly Quiet program would be a marketing incentive for those guys, and not having that gold seal would be a disincentive for the companies that don't. And so I'm wondering if we could take the information to somehow a next level of influencing through connecting with these corporate partners at, at the top.
Well, I think there may be some opportunities there. As you were sharing that, Rachel, it struck me that I did run across an operator who did make a change in, in their aircraft based on the information that we were working with here. So there's at least one decision that was shifted as part of this and perhaps more. So interesting twist, Rachel.
Yeah, I mean, I was just thinking, my niece is thinking about buying a car, and she's doing all her Consumer Reports research of which is the most dependable and which is this, and rated the most for safety. And it'd be nice if, if our system took off to the next level.
That's great. Well, so if she buys an airplane, she should call us, too.
Before she buys it.
Yeah, before she buys it.
Before she buys.
So the single operators was, again, those that have a individual, individual owner that has a plane, that they come in, either corporation or individual. And there was quite a few of those airplanes that in here, but there were 164 of these people had a plane that had that 9.0 or greater value, what we'd call the best, and all with at least six departures per year, so a minimum level of operations and all. So there were quite a few of them. Some fly in here a lot, and that's the list of those that fly in here quite a bit that have that good score and all.
Gosh.
And then this is those that did not do quite as well in the individual operators, the low-score ones. This is a list of those. My eyesight isn't even good enough to see that far away, but the list of those that had the most number of operations, I think the most we had was around six departures a year, in the numbers I see there. And interestingly enough, we also measure when they have high noise events, and that's where the high noise events come through. So there is really a relationship between having high noise events and these planes, that we measure, and these planes that generate high noise that certify poorly. So we tried to categorize, list all of those, and then the ones, if they, even small number of operations, if they did create a high noise event, so. And almost all of them are going to be a Gulfstream 2, 3, or a Learjet, so.
Mostly airplanes that were produced in the late 70s and early 80s fit in that, that category.
Well, at a couple of the sites, and really at Woody Creek, we show the data because it's more, longer term, and it's a site that's been up for a number of years. And what are the loudest noise events that happened there during that couple-week period that we might be measuring, summer and winter? And again, it's a lot, it's the same planes, really. The Gulfstream 2s, 3s, Learjets are the main ones causing it. Oh, cool. Thank you. That's fine. So the loudest versus the quieter, the top 25 for winter time per day, and then summer. Generally, we do have more in the summer. You have more of that activity in the summertime. You'll have more louder events and all than in the wintertime. And more per just the number of corporate jets coming in is bigger in the summer than the winter.
The, as you said, you noted that you take readings in the wintertime and the summertime, and I'm just curious, rather than using the July 4th time period, it seems like when the airport is at its all-time busiest in terms of private aircraft, it's during the Aspen Ideas Festival. And I'm wondering whether that would be some additional information that you could utilize?
If we were to expand our, the number of weeks that we do, the noise analysis data collection piece, I think that would be a great weekend or a great week to do that. When we started this program, July 4th was the peak summer moment. So that's how it was chosen originally. And the Ideas Fest and a few other programs have started, have attracted more corporate aircraft in the last five or six, seven years. But the July 4th was the benchmark that goes way back.
And we, we do have more noise in the summer than the wintertime, really, just because the corporate jets are busier then, more popular to come in. So as part of this, is there, letters were sent out, Rick prepared letters and sent it to the owners of these planes to acknowledge their, you know, their scores and all and improvements. Some of them like to make big events out of it, some don't as much, but that's what is done to them and make that information available, that they can promote themselves to be able to say, look, we're a Fly Green-type airliner, operator and such, so. And similarly, that same sort of information went out to the single operators as well, the same ones we talked about a little bit earlier. But that's a list of them, again, here. Now, as part of it, too, is kind of tracking over time, you know, besides this Fly Quiet measurement, how has the noise changed over time? And is it getting better, getting worse, is it staying the same? How is it different in different metrics as well, too? Because everybody responds a little bit differently to noise. And traditionally, as you know, your FAA friends use this metric called DNL, which is the summation of all the noise throughout the day averaged over the whole year. And it's a pretty good language planning tool, but it doesn't tell you a lot of how one person might respond or not respond. But it does get a good indication of change over time. So its magnitude may not be what everybody likes, but it's a good level of showing improvement or disprovement, because it takes into account how loud planes are and how many there are. So if you have more flights, your DNL gets bigger. If you have quieter planes, your DNL gets smaller. So it responds to that. The other is measured noise, what we get in terms of our actual measured data. And the single event is something that's been useful to everybody in terms of high noise events. How often do you hear high noise events? I remember, you know, when, when Don Lemos was active and things, and he could always tell when a certain Gulfstream went overhead where he lives, so.
And he nicknamed those airplanes.
Yes, he had names for them, which-
That are not repeatable.
Yes, they aren't repeatable names, but. And then the last, that fleet quality or Stage Two, that was those red lines you talked about. It's, you know, the fleet quality rating system is a little bit complicated, obviously. So this is a measure of less complicated way of showing improvement over time. So we have those as well that have been tracking really since year 2000. And this is the results for 2013, again, showing a reduction in almost all those measures. And I'll show the comparison here that we have in the next graphic. You know, really, the loud corporate jets in 2003 for the last 10 years, down to 166, so 1,200 to 166, so probably a, you know, 85% improvement, 80% improvement or so of that. So they are really diminishing. Similarly, Lear jets are a tenth of what they used to be and all. So there are still some, but that's about a half a flight a day or so, as opposed to two or three a day in the old days, you know. So trend, it had sort of plateaued for a while, and then it started to drop off again, and we continue to see that. Now, that's partly due to, you know, Jim's efforts, Fly Quiet Program attrition, fact that these burn more fuel than other things, so, you know, there's lots of factors in it, but, but you are ahead of the rest of the nation by this. So you'll still see a higher percent than what you guys have. You're just 1% or so of your corporate jets. So this is that trend that we would have of, it's a little bit complicated graph, but change in DNL, what we've measured at sites, again, that's measured at the Woody Creek site that we've been at for a long time. A lot of, you know, you can see these steps in reduction in noise that have happened, that it's a 3, 4 dB quieter from 2000 or so, which is a big drop-off in noise. And again, that's primarily due to the fleet change. The change in number of high events, that's again, the getting rid of the louder planes. Now, at least the Woody Creek site, we were having just, you know, one every three or four days would generate these high events, where it used to be, you know, two a day or so.
What do the initials, DNL and SEL stand for?
Okay, DNL is Day-Night Noise Level. It's a FAA metric to measure these 24-hour noise, all the noise throughout the day averaged throughout the year. So it takes into account how loud planes are and how many there are. But it's nothing you, as an individual, could hear and say, gee, that sounds like a 55 to me. You know, it's, it's a metric, really. And it's kind of like the BCS polling thing for, for football. Everyone criticizes it because it's an attempt to try and relate to human response to something that's, everybody responds differently.
And SEL?
SEL is Sound Exposure Level, so that's how loud an individual plane is. And it takes into account how loud it is and how long it is loud, its duration and its peak. But it's an individual flight.
And that's what you hear.
Yeah, so that's more of what you hear, and, and that's really what your community is more interested in, you know, finding out about, because it's much easier to relate Change in size of contour, really, we have a contour in there. It's, it's dropped about 25% in the last three, four years. It's more than 50% if we go back to 2000 and all. But during the time period of the Fly Quiet program, which, it shows a reduction and all. And then that Stage Two percent is down to around 1% now. We're, it's above 12% back in the, you know, 2000s, so. So when Jim started here, it was like 12%, and now it's like 1%. So you, should you take credit for all that, or you want to-
No, but thank you for all of that.
So, and some of these changes changed different areas, and we want to show that. So there's a couple contours that we have here, and I wanted more, show the larger one. And going back in time, where this is 2013 versus 2009. So the dash lines are in 2013, the solid line is the other one. You can see there's a overall noise, but we still, because of the runway extension and West Buttermilk is still a little bit louder than it was in 2009, because of that shift in the noise. Those are areas we need to work on and improve and continue on the noise reduction and all. If we did this contour, 2000 is probably more closer to about the same. But those are where, you know, the noise changes, so otherwise, it's pretty uniform around the whole valley and all.
Yes.
I got a complaint yesterday from people who live on McLean Flats Road, kind of directly across from the FBI. Their complaint was about the noise the airplanes make when they're either warming up or testing the engines, or that sort of a thing. So is there a difference in these different kind of aircraft? And when they're just sitting on the ground, warming up their engine, is the engine quieter then also for the newer aircraft?
They're quieter, and it's not really the engine, it's auxiliary power unit. So they have, while the plane's sitting on the ground, a small little engine that is running in the back, at least of the newer planes, they have an auxiliary power unit. And then the pilot will be configuring it, getting it, you know, ready for departure, waiting for his passengers to come there. And you tend to have that sound, it's just continuous. It's not particularly loud, but it's continuous, so it can lead to some irritation. Some of the older ones are, don't have auxiliary power, so they have to run the engine, so those can be a little bit louder. But in reality, there's probably not a huge difference in the plane technologies in that. But that is one of the areas we've looked into that, of how to deal with, which may be really eventually building a barrier across that area to block it, because it is a ground noise source, so you can put something in between to be able to block that sound and force that sound to go over the top. Barriers don't work once the plane's in the air, but because they're parked right there, there is some beneficial, and that's some of the things we've been looked at. We do have a measurement site in the North 40 to try and measure that noise and document it over time, and it continues to be there, so, yes.
And Steve, I'd add to, that's one of the areas. The, the takeoff and landing component of this is where this program really has been focused. But one of the issues that is ongoing and has been a little tougher issue to make as dramatic a change and improvement that we've seen here was, and has been, the auxiliary power units, while the airplane's sitting and waiting for the passengers. It's one thing to, to light up the system and be able to enter all of the key data that you need to successfully fly a flight, but there are circumstances where the airplane is, is really just in wait mode and for those people in the back to arrive and, and take off. And, and one of the missing ingredients that we've struggled with there is how to get to the people who- people who are in the back of the airplane. We can talk to the pilots, bless you, we can talk to the pilots quite a bit and they're sympathetic and understand. But if someone says they're going to arrive at 3 o'clock and they show up at 4 o'clock, that means that that system's been running for an extra hour. And how do we kind of reach and touch those individuals so they can be sensitive to call the pilots and say, you know, we ran into a delay, you know, we'll be there a little later or this time instead? That's proved to be a little elusive to connect with those individuals.
Nicely said.
Well, that's, I think that was the last slide.
Yeah, just reiterate that this is, again, a very unique program and it's proved successful from many measures as we look at the noise reduction. Some people, you know, will not see the noise reduction as much as other people do, but overall, I think it's done a great job. Jim, you want to close it?
Well, I agree with Rick. I think it's been a success. As we were sitting here, I kind of wish we had put together the acreage that's moved out of one particular noise impact and or less so now. I think that the work we did relative to the runway extension and analysis proved to be very accurate overall with a couple of exceptions. And, you know, I hope this program continues and I know one thing is that in my tenure, that was usually one of the first or second things people would ask me about when I first met them. You know, what about noise? What can we do? How can this change? And the issue is no longer one of the first or second things when I introduce myself to someone as the airport director. So, you know, to me, that's kind of the ultimate measurement. If you go from having it very much a front and center issue to an important issue, but maybe not the first thing on someone's concern list. So I, I think overall, we're not done yet. Lots of work still to be done, but the improvements have been good.
George?
So what is the role, responsibility for the FBOs? I mean, can we, I'm sure you utilize them, but when you answer the question in terms of passing on the information, if a guest is going to be an hour late to inform the pilot, I mean, where does the FBO fit in as sort of a link in this process?
Well, a lot of times the, and the FBO here has been very successful, you know, helpful in that area. Fred Mosher understands the issue and wants us to be good neighbors. But it really comes down to that the people in the back being self-aware enough to kind of understand the moving parts that they influence. And in many cases, the fixed base operator may not ever see the people that are directly interface with them if more than just in a low kind of experience because their contacts, just like ours, are with the flight crews. And so, you know, kind of getting to that party that's caused the airplane to fly here and such is not that much easier for them. They do have a little more touch. They've been anxious to work with us because they see, they see that's a visible portion and an important piece for our community.
Just a quick follow-up, it just seems like this, as you said, Rick, this is such a unique program, this Fly Quiet program. And if we're able to utilize this as a model for certainly other resort communities, that would continue to add pressure on the, those using the aircraft that are noisier and perhaps better inform the consumers in terms of choices.
Well, one of the things that we installed and we still think has a working benefit from it is the infrared cameras that we mounted at the airport. I think there's going to be an opportunity for us to be able to measure those hot spots from those infrared cameras and be able to interact with the airplane and the flight crew. We could, at some point, collect enough data that we could make recommendations to you, that we put in ordinance or some other requirement that they're only allowed to run those auxiliary power units a certain window of time to successfully work their flight. Those are all options that I think are still kind of in the mix and we're trying to find the right answers to bring recommendations to you. Because I, that intelligent video that we have at the airport has the capability of taking a picture of that airplane and tracking how long the engines have been running, those kind of things, and how we can kind of make that transition. But once again, like so many things we've done here, it's not been done anywhere else that we're aware of, so we can't just, you know, pull their program out and transfer and change the names to protect the innocent and move it to our airport. We're having to kind of generate this capacity and ability and I think we're going to get there, it's just not quite ready for prime time today.
Well, hopefully you'll bring this program to Jackson Hole where you, instead of dealing with woody creatures, you're dealing with other animals.
Thank you, I'll bring that one forward.
Additional questions? Comments? Jim?
Well, I appreciate if you'll indulge me for just a moment to say thank you.
No way.
It's been a highlight of my career to be here. The individuals in this community, I think, are some of the most exceptional people I can imagine. We've had intelligent conversations about how the airport fit into the community and what could be done, what should be done, and how should it be done. I think that's pretty remarkable for a community. We did that with a minimum amount of ranker. It's been in good faith and passionate thoughts on all parties to try to get us the right answer. So I learned something quite remarkable when I first came here. And, you know, we're supposed to be airport executives and we have some experiences that we hopefully bring to the table. And this community really does have a wonderful relationship with its airport. It's not always easy, but it's always been strong. And we tried very hard to be the airport the community wanted us to be. And that was our focal point through this tenure. I want to acknowledge the team at the airport. They are the most remarkable people that I can think of working with anywhere. Of the team and individuals over my career, this is absolutely the standard bearer. They are professional and they care deeply. They, and they performed under some very difficult circumstances with a tremendous amount of professionalism and care. I also wanted just a couple of more thank yous. A huge one goes to all of you. You know, the Board of County Commissioner is a very challenging job and I think that sometimes gets lost on the public. From an airport perspective, all of you asked tough questions. You held our feet to the fire. And you wanted what was best for the community. There's very few thank yous that go with being an elected official. I think all of you performed exceptionally well. And you gave us the advice, gave us the staff direction that we needed. And I'd like to do just a little call out to Berthia Ferris and Shelley Roy, Patty Clapper and Jack Catfield, Nick Ireland, had the pleasure of working with them. Additionally, I think, I hope that all of you give the respect to the next airport director that you shared with me, so, thank you. Little shout out to Mr. Peacock. He along with Hillary Fletcher, you know, really made me look better than I have, so thank you. So anyway, that's it. I leave with very bittersweet, but very pleased for a new challenge and opportunity, but incredibly thank you, thankful for all this community has done for me in the last 13 years, so grateful.
Thank you.
Jim, you're not off the hook, we'll be there at 5:00. We'll look forward to that, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you all.
Connie's up next with the Financial Advisory Board.
One more round of questions?
We're waiting for John and the Financial Advisory Board.
Okay. Why don't we, should we jump to future agendas?
I am just having some trouble pulling those up.
Nah, they're here.
Okay, John Rudman, Finance Director. Here with Connie Garofalo, our Budget Director, and two FAB members, Lex Terumjans and Emily Essig. Today, we're here to discuss the economic assumptions, which become the basis of our 2015 budget. These economic assumptions drive our major revenues, those being property tax, interest income, sales tax, and community development fees. We meet and discuss projections for this year and then for the next five years. And which we provided to you is the economic assumptions for the five-year plan. The first item is, it looks like it's all about Boulder-Denver CPI and US CPI, but those are the basis for the increases to the property tax numbers. We are limited to growth and inflation because of Tabor and the growth is really the overall growth to the base of new construction for the county. I think that we're, from any given year, it's a half a point to a point and a half increase. In this particular year coming up, I think that we have about 1% for 2015 as an increase. We add that to the inflation number, which for next year is 2.7%, and we have a 3.7% increase to property tax revenue. So on a going out basis, it fluctuates up to 4% and then comes back down into the high threes. Are there any questions about property tax?
Rachel?
Yeah, just so you can give me the sequence on it, but given that we really don't know what the inflation will be until after the year has passed, do we then refund a certain amount of property tax? Should that be over the Tabor limits that we had thought we would be?
Well, there's temporary credits which come year to year and that's how.
That's how you even it out? Okay.
And Rachel, let's be clear, the number that, right now, we're doing this prospectively to plan for budget, the Tabor calculation will come later in the process when we have real numbers.
Okay.
The next item is our investment earnings. Prior to the recession, the general fund would receive as much as $1,002,000 in investment income. That number's down into the $30,000 range and unfortunately, it represents less than 1% of our revenues. However, we still continue to forecast these. For this year, we're looking at a half a percent. For next year, we go up to 0.6. And then on the 2016, we go to 2.2, 2017 to 3.7, and it goes up to 4.1 after that. The more aggressive numbers on the out years are coming from the Congressional Budget Office. And I think that from a historical standpoint, from the last couple of years, that number keeps sliding out. So I think when you think about this number on a year-to-year basis, there's very little risk because of numbers, there's not much further down you could go. Any questions on that? Sales tax, year-to-date, and this is through June, we're running about 7.5% on a year-to-year basis ahead of last year. For the end of this year, in this assumption, we are projecting a 5.9% increase for the year. So we believe that's a pretty conservative estimate, especially given what we believe are the strengths for July and August. By the end of August, you've covered about 72% of what you collect for the year. And I think that the, if we can assume that we're still in the 7% range through to date, it's really just down to Christmas and from everything we've heard, Christmas still seems strong.
So the 5.9% is something you're forecasting right now, not something you forecasted a year ago or something?
Right.
And that's based on we're coming into the shoulder season when the sales tax revenue will be down from the 7.9%?
Yeah. And it's, we've seasonalized the projections, knowing that October, November are quiet months. I think that December typically runs at 13% to 14% of the total year, so we don't really know until next February, but it actually is.
So. Let me just, I always ask these questions to make sure I'm on the same page because percentage growth is always based off of something prior that's done, not always at the right time. We budget before the end of the year. We don't know what the end-of-the-year numbers is and we budget towards that. So you've got here a 6.9% growth for 2013. Are those the actual numbers or is?
That's from 12 to 13.
That's from 12 to 13. And then you have 7.3% is where we are above our actual last year?
Through May.
Through May.
Through May, 7.5 through June. And that is actual 2014 above actual 2013.
So those we've got actual numbers on. Our prior forecast, which is 3.5, that's based on without having the year-end numbers, correct?
That was done.
That was done.
About this time.
About this time, a year ago, before we went into budget season. And now we're saying 5.9 is our re-forecast for 2014, for this year, even though we were up on that forecast for 2013 and we're well above that for 2014 through May with strong numbers coming in from the city already for June and July. So, but you still want to go with an ultra-conservative number of 5.9 is what I'm asking because I can guarantee it's going to be above 5.9 at this point. If I were a betting man, I'd put money on it.
Well, we, let's just say we're less conservative than we've been in the past.
Wow.
Now, from a historical standpoint, by being conservative, coming out of the recession, we wanted to make sure that we didn't get ourselves into trouble.
Sure.
Obviously, the economy's improved and it's not a guarantee forever that things are going to be better, but we believe on a go-forward basis of a year or two.
Yeah.
From a historical standpoint, we feel pretty good about that number. I think when we talk about comdev, we make it even a little bit more aggressive and it might be. and you might be feeling like, okay, sales tax might cover me if I have trouble down below.
And just an understanding of how we use these numbers in our budgeting process, and here's where it gets tricky when you start going into the next year, 2015 and 2016. Your margin of error gets larger because you're taking estimates of estimates. So you're taking guesses on guesses. So a 5% growth, that 5% growth is based on 5% in our budgeting process when we do that, that's a 5% growth of the 5.9% because we don't have that final number at the end, which, again, is, you know, it gets tricky there because it's an estimate of an estimate. So the more accurate the most current numbers can be, the less margin of error you have in the outer numbers. So, anyway. Again, I'm just going through it in my mind to make sure I've got it straight. George?
Yeah, as you said, John, the December is really going to be the key month. And there's so many different variables that we have no, no say in terms of, you know, how that will occur, whether it's weather. We know that in the travel industry, booking patterns over the last few years have become shorter and shorter, lead times. So consumers are watching not only snowfall, but whatever's happening in the travel industry with airlines or nationally. So there's so many different factors that we have no control over. So I, you know, I hope it's going to be more, but I would err on the conservative side because December is such a big month for the year.
And my, part of my philosophy is, you know, your forecasting should be based on the most accurate numbers that you can judge them on. How we use those numbers, we can be as conservative as we want. We could say, all right, I can guarantee, well, I can't guarantee, but I can anticipate that we're probably going to be at least 7% up on last year in sales tax numbers. Doesn't mean we have to spend all that money. We can, we could put a lot of that money in a rainy day fund or put it aside, and we can spend at an increase of 5%. But the budgeting numbers, when you do a budget for any business, big or small, or an organization like this, you want the financial numbers to reflect the best information that we know today. And I would make the argument that 5.9% does not reflect the best information we know today. I mean, the best information we know today tells us that that's going to be probably seven or eight, which is quite a bit more. And again, from a budgeting standpoint, I would conserve, I would be on the conservative side and say, that doesn't mean that we need to spend it all until we know those numbers are actual numbers. But that's, that's, this is supposed to be the most accurate to make us make better decisions, not, let's take guesses here, in my opinion. Rachel?
Well, I agree with you, Rob, in principle, and that is why these guys update them, whether they're the quarterly updates or even other times when it seems striking enough to update us in between the quarterlies. So I do know what you're saying, and I, I think this is reasonably conservative just because it so much depends on snow, you know, and such a large percentage of our annual budget is that month of December. And so while the rainy season has made it look like it'll be a great year, you know, and the important thing to me is that we're budgeting fairly close to what we think our predictions are going to be, because, you know, if we're overly conservative, then we're either not bringing on the staff we need to while the economy's ratcheting up, or we're not paying enough to stay competitive while the economy's ratcheting up. And so not being too liberal or too conservative is the best approach, I think, for the organization.
Steve?
Just for comparison's sake, what did this number read going into the recession? Was it numbers in the red going, sales tax going down a certain percent from the previous year?
No, in, in 2009 was the year that we, we're the most affected in sales tax. 2009, the year-to-year comparison, we were down by 17%, which was nearly double the highest percentage since 1972, when it was the last records we could find. So it was quite high. And I think each point is of, sales tax is worth about $70,000. So that was over a million-dollar hit at that time.
So we're in good times now, but I still agree with the advice of the Financial Advisory Board to be, you know, it might be 7% like Rob says, but I think the 5.9% assumption is a much more prudent way to go, like he recommended.
Yes, and I think overall, what we've tried to do is be more aggressive this year. As you can see, in past years, we've stuck with the 3.5%. And this does represent at least an increase from 3.5% to 5.9% into 5% on the two out-years. So we're trying to pump it up a little bit. Because historically, when we throw off a large surplus, the surplus will go into capital projects. Sometimes it makes it difficult to, given that our, between 60% and 70% of our expenditures are about payroll and benefits, we have a tendency to be tight on increasing those. And so it makes it more difficult to add increases to those areas and/or to increase the FTE count. So that's the other side of what we're trying to do. Any more questions about sales tax? Okay. Community development fees. Between last year, ComDev fees increased by 47.9%. That was due to an increase in work, A. We also went back and tried to recapture some fees, which had not been collected at the time of the issuance of the Certificate of Occupancy. That has proven to be, well, it has provided a fair amount of dollars in terms of, I think, up to this year's, maybe about $400,000 to date has been recaptured. And those, those recapture fees are the result of a discrepancy between the initial estimate, a change in the scope of the work, and other factors, which include a lot more scrutiny going into the schedules of values that the contractors provide us with. So last year was a big jump, and we believe that that will continue over the next couple of years because of the nature of these jobs, or multi-year jobs. I think we closed jobs last year that permits had been issued in 2008, 2009, 10, 11. We were going back and capturing fees on jobs, which in essence were five and six years old. So we believe that this recapture will continue to provide dollars at the end of the jobs. What it's also doing is, at the permit issuance now, starting in 2013 onward, is that the department has been actually raising the average per foot costs that they're accepting as the permit values. So it's, go ahead.
Thank you for that. You know, the recapture on some of the old, as you said, will continue to pay off as those projects finish. And then kind of going forward from a certain point in time, we're, we've just, are getting more accurate base. And our philosophy has always been that community development as a department will pay its own way, development pays its own way. So we're beginning kind of to catch up. And I'm wondering if you have any idea as to, or even been tracking it in this manner, that we repay what we had subsidized community development with from the General Fund over the slow recession years?
Yes, and it's still in excess of $1 million as to the negative.
To that, okay.
Yeah. The other thing to understand is that we collect fees today, which our expenditures will occur over the next five or six years, and that the inspections, the building inspections happen over the next few years. And so, as we call it, recapture. It really, we can't think of these dollars as to be exactly matched to today's expenditures. It's really, a certain percentage of them will be spent in the future years.
And so it's a good, there are a number of factors going in. One is construction inflation, which is higher typically, particularly in this valley, than your standard inflation rate. And that's one basis of value. The other piece is volume, how much work we're doing. And then the recapture, and also the capital needs associated, like facilities and stuff coming up for, to house those functions, or items we're going to need to figure out how to cover within this fee structure. But all of those factors now are kind of going in.
Lined up.
Which, yeah, which is part of why you're seeing this percentage increase. It's the rebasing, it's the increase in construction inflation, it's the increase in value. A portion of that increase, though, is also going to be predictive of future workload, like John's saying. It's not total, we're not saying it's going to go up by 15% because some of that is construction inflation and adjustments and whatnot. But a portion of that is also volume. That's going to be directly predictive then of what kind of workloads we're going to see in building inspection in particular over the next three to five years. And so that's something we've got to be tracking with as we look at the five-year plan also.
And this big jump in 2015 is because we know what's in the pipeline and what's going to be finishing up and drawings coming in right now.
And some estimates of construction inflation and, yeah.
Yeah, the architects are busy. We have existing backlog and permits that haven't been issued. There's the recapture, and then there's inflation also is in the background. So I think there's a lot of factors that typically we were estimating 3% to 5% increase. And it seems to be substantially stronger now than it has been in the past.
I guess sort of as a sideline, sidebar on this, if, and we've had this discussion before with ComDev, if we're able to speed up the process, the building permit process, not only would we get more work out the door, but we'd have better accurate information in terms of what's happening.
I think we're seeing some of that gap close with the resources that we've added. They're already feeling pinched again, though. It's a busy summer, for sure.
It'd be nice, not from a financial side, but we, to get a recap on what's going on in the development side of things, you know, where the staff level is, where the permit process stuff is, what's going on. We talk about it from time to time. We've had reviews on it, but I think it's about time to maybe have another work session on that sort of thing, to see what's going on with that.
Sure.
Go ahead. Do you have any questions for us or for FAB members?
Just thanks for participating and sorting through it and giving us the recommendations. I'm happy to accept those. Great.
I'm just kind of curious. How much time does the committee spend on this? I mean, is it over a couple of months, or a few weeks, or one night?
Couple, a couple hours.
Couple hours? Because you just, you have this information, you've got all the data, so just looking at the data and coming up with some.
Talking through it.
Talking through it, yeah.
Yeah.
That's, I think from a finance department standpoint, along with Tom Oakin, we spend a fair amount of time putting it together and going. That's really where most of the betting is. But I think, as Lex is involved in a lot of real estate issues, he has an understanding of the retail market and where that's going. Jonathan is with the banks. He understands where the construction loans are happening or not happening. Emily, our new addition, is a construction person and can give us kind of an accurate view as to whether we're correct on inflation numbers, those kind of things. And Lisa is a good financial analyst. It's a good group.
Very good. Just thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. We are scheduled for a break, but over the time. And I don't know, John, if you had any advice on our 4:40 special meeting?
Well, I'm thinking if you take a break, by the time we get through board membership reports and such, we may be right about on that schedule.
Okay. So let's take a.
Rob, Donnette is here right now. Do we want to do her item?
Yeah, let's, if you're here, let's do that. Let's do it. Let's move on to that one.
Then we can do a break after.
Ready? Okay. Hey, everyone. I'm Donnette Logan. I'm the Director of Human Resources for Pitt King County. And today, I'm seeking board approval for a budget supplemental request to support project initiatives related to job classification. In late 2013, Pitt King County engaged Fox Lawson &amp; Associates to conduct a diagnostic review of our total compensation, total reward structure, but in this specific instance, our job classification structure. So I'm reporting on the job classification structure at this point. The findings of the diagnostic review show that Pitt King County's current job classification structure involves approximately 215 full-time and 39 part-time employees in 143 current job classifications or job titles. The current job classification structure, with less than a 2:1 ratio of employees to classes, is a very narrow system. This type of system that we currently have in place invites compression within class and pay structures. And it does not provide significant flexibility to address changing work. I would add to that, that the current classification structure is unmanageable. 143 job classes or job titles and descriptions is unmanageable. It's also unsustainable. A more appropriate, manageable and sustainable job classification structure is approximately 25 classes instead of 143, or on average, a 1:10 ratio of employees to classes. The recommendation by Fox Lawson &amp; Associates, based on the diagnostic review, is simply that it is necessary for Pitt King County to adopt a broader job classification system that reflects meaningful and measurable differences in the level of work within each occupational group. This will provide for us greater essential duty identification and pay differentiation between class levels, which is almost impossible right now. And we knew that going into this when we started our job reclassification project in 2013, when we benchmarked all of our 143 job titles against the external market as we re-entered a wage allocation process. Go off a little bit, as an aside. This project will also allow us, when you adopt a true job classification system rather than a job title system, you identify unique competencies supporting success in each classification, up to 25, as I mentioned earlier. This is going to be extremely important for us as we go to a true pay-for-performance system and we design a performance review that captures competencies. Okay? So the first part of that, before we can proceed, is the job classification, or the classification of our jobs into tighter groups. So Pitt King County Human Resource therefore seeks to engage Fox Lawson &amp; Associates job classification system. The total new budget appropriation required for this project is $29,126, as indicated.
George, go ahead.
Do we have any idea, I'm sure you do, looking at comparable counties or even the City of Aspen, what their ratio is and how, for employees to classes?
I don't know, George, what their ratio is in looking at the data, because we benchmark against the City of Aspen, Basalt, Eagle County, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. They have, they tend to have much smaller classification systems than we do. Our current state, though, if I look at the City of Aspen, it's probably pretty comparable. But they are currently working with another consultant on their job classification structure. So, they're facing the same types of issues that we are and they're presently addressing them.
So, I'm just, before we get into some of these questions, I'm just trying to get a little examples of what some of this means. I mean, you see federal government's jobs classified as G1, G2, G3, G4.
Right, right.
And then, there are lots of classifications under G1, lots of classifications under G2, lots of classifications under, is that what your, what the recommendation is here?
Yeah.
To have 25 classifications, you have executive, department heads.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's not like you're eliminating jobs and-
No.
And you're not gonna have the same job description, because you talk about job descriptions here, too. You're not gonna have the same job description for one department head versus another department head. You're just layering our organizational chart into 25 layers as opposed to 143 layers.
Correct.
So, that's, that's what we're talking about doing here.
Yes, yes. And you gave a really good example. And the simplest way to look at it would be to look at paraprofessional, professional-type classes, craft worker-type class of administrative classes. We may not end up with that exact or specific language, that's still being looked at. But yes, that's exactly what we-
There may be someone on the organizational chart way over here that's the same classification as someone that's way over here and then the same thing in different, in different levels.
That's correct. If we look at, I mean, just a quick example to your point, is if we look at an administrative assistant, we have another job title called badging administrator, and then another job title called title transfer technician, and these represent different departments. They may all fit into the same class. They may, now, in that, within that class, to your point about federal government, there may be series tied to that.
Yeah.
But the knowledge, the skills, the abilities, the competencies, more importantly, and the educational requirements will be identical.
And, you know, somewhere along the line, I'd like the answer to, you know, how, what are the growing pains from going from the system that we have now to that system? Because if you have a group of classifications where some people are here, some people are here, some people are here, and you're gonna put them all together, does that mean everybody goes up to the top classification in that group, which means pay raises and those sorts of things? Or do some people go down, which is never fun for an employee to say, you're, you're at the top end of your classification, but now we're grouping you in with people that are well below you and we're grouping your benefit package into something that's well below, and it's a tremendous growing pain in a big organization-
Yes, it's a great question.
To reclassify people-
It's a great question.
Within that range.
We discussed that in our last conference call with Fox Lawson, and this is the job classification portion of the project. What will come in to play, the second stage of this project, will be the job evaluation piece. We will emerge from this with an entirely revised, different look to our current pay schedule. And, but I had that concern, I expressed it, and basically, the response that I was given is that it's going to be so different that we are not gonna be able to say, well, if I'm a D grade now and I'm going to a, it may not even be the same type of leveling, to an M as an example, grade level, wow, I'm gonna get, you know, a 50% increase. It's not even gonna be comparable. But along the way, when we start the job classification process, Rob, the consultants will be working directly with employees and addressing those questions as we go along, beginning with classification all the way through job evaluation and the grading of the positions, so.
And am I correct to assume that the 25 classifications is for an administrative level, being able to have packages of, of compensation and benefits and that sort of stuff? I mean, really, you have, like I said, you have a different job description for this person and this person, because they're in different departments. But because they fall in the same classification, on an administrative level, it eases the job to say, you fall in this price range, you fall in this price range and-
That's correct.
And because you have these qualifications getting into that, you qualify for this, this level, and because it falls into our organization at this level, you fall into this level.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm concerned about the growing pains of getting from A to B on this and what, what it might do to our, our budget in making a change or to our employees and having them understand where they're gonna fall.
Right. And, you know, the good, the good news is, having conducted a full benchmark activity against the external market in, you know, we wrapped that up in April of 2013, we don't anticipate, as a result of a structure change, as much growing pain as that will entail, much changes in market conditions.
Sure.
It'll still be a very close alignment, so we're not anticipating-
Or a phase period.
Yeah, you got it. Mm-hmm.
Rachel?
Yeah, a couple of things. First, I just don't really like looking at a two-part project and not knowing what the second part really is going to cost. And it wasn't presented to us that way. I mean, you've brought up that, well, this is just the first step, then, well, what's the next step gonna cost? And, you know, what are the timelines? And to me, it's just better to have the full project and know where we're ending up. Because if, if we didn't do the next step, maybe funding this step doesn't make a lot of sense either. But, you know, so it, that just, I prefer to see the whole path you're going on.
Let me provide that snapshot for you, Rachel. This request is to carry us through 2014, and it really is the job classification finalized. We have a sequence of projects going on right now that are dependent on the competencies and so forth that will emerge from this project. We then placed an additional budget supplemental request in our 2015 budget. We'll be meeting on that, I believe, this week for approval. That part, that request, will cover the job evaluation. Our goal then is, by the end of 2014, a job classification structure will be in place. And then, beginning in 2015, we'll begin the evaluation or the tie to the market and the creation of a pay schedule. And we anticipate that that's going to be finalized by the end of March.
Okay. I appreciate that. And it's just more for future memos. I really prefer knowing the full project you're getting into and that there's gonna be something else coming down the pike. The other is, I really am not sure where 142 job classifications evolved from. I wasn't at the county at the time. But I do recall, there was a kind of a major effort the county undertook to make sure they were valuing work by different genders equally, or somewhat more equally. And I wanna make sure that we don't lose whatever ground we gained on that, because it seems that it's more of a, you know, if we're now benchmarking with the general market, the general market has always kind of disvalued women's work and highly valued men's work, and it's part of our pay equity issues. And so, I realize that's probably coming in the second phase of this, but I really need to put my marker down now, that that's something I wanna make sure we're not losing any ground on. Like, you know, it's just, it's too prevalent if we're just benchmarking with the rest of the marketplace.
Genuine concern, Rachel.
Yeah. Rachel, I think you're bringing up an important point, and it's one that maybe we haven't made enough in this. Part of what we're trying to do with this project is create better internal equity with, with our jobs. And what we've done now is, we've created a system that's very complicated with very marginal differences, right?
Sure.
Between steps. And I think it is much more difficult for us to evaluate and deliver internal equity on objective criteria, which are, what are the skills and abilities needed for a job versus, you know, the maybe more traditional market? So, it actually, in a way, what this does is, this will group by skills and abilities, right? And then, market data will inform where those skills and abilities should be paid. Because if we just did it on market data for these really discrete job descriptions, I think we run actually a greater risk of the type of inequities that you expressed the concern about, versus basing them on some objective criteria about, okay, what are the skills, abilities, education and such required? Now, let's go and benchmark these to, to market now that we have these grouped by those objective criteria. And right now, we've, and I think this is a system that's just evolved over time and then hasn't been touched in a long time, since the recession and that sort of thing. That's made it really difficult for us to manage on those internal equity issues. And I think that's at least part of what's been expressed to me from, from HR, is a problem that they're trying to solve for the organization. So, it's a, it's a good point.
Okay.
George?
I'm supportive of this. My question is, Phase Two, you mentioned, that's gonna be in 2015. So, why would you be coming before us for a supplementary budget request for 2015? Won't you build that into the 2015 budget?
Thank you.
So, this is for 2014. This is so we can get started on the base work.
No, I understand this one.
And then, 2015 is part of the 2015 budget process.
Budget, yeah. Because you mentioned a supplementary budget request in 2015, but it would just be part of-
A buy-up request, my apologies.
It's a buy-up request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm in, I'm in favor of this. I think it makes sense, but I am concerned about the growing pains, and I just think that that's a major organizational policy decision, and that it should be made here at this board. So, to be bringing it back to us as things develop and what the recommendations are for, for implementation, I think is crucial.
Okay. Great. All right. Thank you.
Take the break now?
So, yeah, let's take a 11-minute break, come back at-
4:10.
4:10.
Great.
Should be able to get through.
Okay. Great. All right. Thank you.
Take the break now?
So, yeah, let's take an 11-minute break, come back at?
4:10.
4:10.
Great.
Should be able to get through.
Welcome back. This is the work session, Board of County Commissioners, Picking County, Colorado, September 2nd. Suzanne Wolfe is here for our future agendas information. I've been told.
And just real briefly, Rob, we wanted to talk, the board had asked to do a site visit to the GSS property site during the last land use hearing on the item. And so we wanted to come back and talk about potential dates for that.
And I did check in with Jim Curtis who said he was available. The Holloways are out of town from September 24th to the 5th, according to Ann Marie McPhee. So, you know, again, it sort of becomes, how many people do we want to schedule around? I thought it would be.
What was the date that we continued this to?
It's not continued at this point. What's coming back next week to you will be the takings determinations, which is really the, is the denial of takings, actually for both of the driveways. The meeting beyond that will be the meaty discussion and Jim Curtis was thinking that probably wouldn't happen until like the second meeting in October. So, you know, that, we've got time before then, but just wanted to make sure we.
Well, our schedule on the Tuesday, the 23rd, is pretty open unless you wanted to try to bump things around on the 16th and get it done sooner.
I think we're going to need actually more time on the 16th.
So we should stick with the 23rd then.
Do a morning at Woody Creek, meet and drive? The 23rd?
It's up to the board.
Try to schedule it in at around 9:30, 10:00, something like that and then come here afterwards.
That's good of me.
Let's see if that works and we'll do it by email.
Okay.
Looks like we've got a mostly nod of heads for those people that would participate.
Good.
Board members.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Suzanne, while we're still here on future agendas, can I ask?
Yeah.
I didn't see on the future agendas when the TDRs were going to come back to us. Is that an ordinance or a code amendment? It wasn't on the future agendas. I thought that was coming back in September. TDRs, the different allocation, the ratio.
Yeah, the ratio.
Well, no, we did second reading. It's already been done.
The code amendment for CDPUD and that one?
Yes.
That's done. That was done and will be effective on the 7th.
We didn't do the work session that you've asked for about TDRs in general.
No, 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 no. I meant.
But the code amendments that affected CDPUD and the rate and then the limited development contribution.
From 1 to 20 to 135.
Correct. Is approved and.
But the general work session, because you also wanted to have a general discussion that we have pulled together.
I was like, oh, am I missing something? Is there one I didn't know about?
There was the 30 days till it takes effect.
Yeah, it was adopted, I think, yeah, probably second meeting in July. So now it's coming around being in effect. Great.
Okay, John, anything else on future agendas?
Just the only thing I note for you on September 16th, we were going to be giving you more of a general facilities update, but that's going to be a little bit more detailed discussion about alternatives and what we've learned from R and L. So we're going to need to find some additional time. We're going to need more than a half hour for that. And so we may be doing a little bit of moving around to make sure that happens.
Okay.
If the X Games update isn't as timely, that would be one I think we could probably move.
I think that's one, we're seeing different requests for X Games this year and it is one that I think we want to get from you pretty quickly. So we'll, we'll see how we can compress things. I just wanted to note for you that we'll probably need at least an hour for that facilities discussion to get some direction. I got, yeah. So that's it for now.
I have one thing. And I just had a brief discussion with our clerk, Janice, about having a scheduled time to discuss the upcoming election procedures that should be scheduled in on October at some point. There's a difference with the service centers versus the voting places and I want to make sure that we all know what to tell people when people ask us, how do we vote this year? It is a mail ballot election, but there are service centers, there are only three service centers versus the five voting places and the dates of early voting and all that. So I just want to make sure that we, and she'll coordinate with you a time to come, whether it's a MOI or what, but.
Or maybe we should go ahead and schedule time on October 7th right now.
You know, I'd love to see us do something sooner than that because October 7th will be after.
The mail ballots.
Well, no, I was thinking early registration, but I'm not even sure if that has changed. Can you register the same day of the election?
You can register up to the day of the election now in Colorado. So she said she was going to try to do it about two weeks before the mail ballots, but I don't know exactly the date of those and.
Okay.
So maybe you can coordinate with her, but I do think that's an important thing for us to have.
Why don't we go ahead and reserve out that hour slot on October 7th so it doesn't go away?
Yeah. And it may not be an hour discussion.
Yeah. Was there anything else? Future agenda, yes.
Couple of events that are going on. One, the Colorado River District Fall Seminar will be on Friday, September 19th in Grand Junction. And I am going to go to that. Rachel will not be going to it. She's not able to. So we can put that on. Also on, the Colorado Water Conservation Board is meeting in Glenwood Springs on September 11th and 12th at the Hotel Colorado. And I thought we should, I'm probably going to go to part of that and part of the meeting there also, meeting with the Colorado Parks and Wildlife Board on September 11th, a joint meeting they're having. So I thought that would be one, a meeting of interest to all the board.
I'm planning on stopping by the Glenwood Springs Colorado Water Conservation Board the afternoon of the 11th on my way to Denver. QQ has asked me to give them, give comments for them on the state water plan and I told them it'd be convenient for me. QQ has kind of reserved some public comment time on each of their quarterly meetings, but I hadn't really planned on sitting in on the rest of the agenda. Maybe look at it as I get closer. And we do have that CCI meeting, the 12th, which isn't on here down in Denver.
No.
There's the one later for October 3rd, but not for the September 12th. And so that's the meeting. We will again be discussing any of our legislative items that you need to get anything from Bruce with the ambulance district or anything to us.
Anything else on future agendas? Move on to board reports. And we have not met since our, in the last month, since we last did board reports for Northwest COG, our rural resort region. So I don't have anything to report.
Northwest COG, I attended the Regional Transportation Coordinating Council, RTCC, and that was on August 6th at the Eco Transit Office in Gypsum. And normally someone from the senior center will go to that, but I was the only Picking County representative there this time. So they, a lot of the talk was about the rolling out of the mountain ride, the website, they have a website and a call-in number where people can call in to get a ride to doctor's appointments or, you know, non-emergency transportation or to arrange rides to go to the VA hospital in Grand Junction for medical care, that sort of thing. So that's what a whole lot of the effort has been into setting the system up for, you know, kind of a unified transportation system where people can get around to the places they need to get when they don't have their own transportation.
Yeah, that's been the big initiative through rural resort region portion of Northwest COG over the last four years and it kind of doubled up on years. Normally they find some initiative to give some small grant money to for a two-year period and they've kind of doubled up on that one. Core?
Make it simple. I don't have anything to report from Core, NORTA Council or the TPR.
It's Club 20.
Well, Club 20 is going to be having their big fall meetings on the 5th and 6th of this month, end of this week. They'll be having the debates for all the various offices that are up and I was just checking the schedule, that one actually closed out until about nine o'clock on Saturday night with all of them. And I anticipate be a moderator in one of those debates and perhaps panelist in one of the others. And that's kind of all the big news with Club 20 right now.
And.
On that Club 20 meeting, Rachel, I was asked to be one of the panelists for this, our Senate district.
Oh, very good.
One on Saturday morning, so I'll be down there.
Okay.
And I'll probably come by part of the board meeting on Friday also.
Sounds good. Just keep that question secret.
John Basin?
Yeah, we met just on Monday of last week and our next meeting will be coming up on the 29th of September. It's a fifth Monday instead of the usual fourth Monday. And most of the work of the meeting was talking about continuing to revise the basin implementation plan and feedback from other areas and their restoration work and their tam risk removal project, things like that. And there was a decision made to work with a new vendor to polish up the basin implementation plan as it has evolved so far, changing the format to something more computer printer friendly. It was a 14 by 11 or something like that, very hard to print out, easier to read, but, and just kind of continuing on with more water work. I don't know, Steve, you had anything that really struck you that you wanted to bring up from that?
No, not right now.
Yeah, there's just.
It's an ongoing effort. We still have chances to weigh in on, you know, suggesting changes.
And as I, you know, did mention at the end of our meeting last week during open discussion, we had a great showing of people who commented to the state water interim committee about the water demands and needs of our area.
Ruadi Water and Power. They've been, they got funding from the Forest Service that weren't expected, so they have more money than they usually do for the aquatic fish and species. So they asked farmers, including healthy rivers and streams, if they could keep those funds that had already been granted, but they didn't need to use and so, you know, hold them over because the Forest Service gave them this year, but there's no guarantee that it's anything going to happen next year. That's the problem with funding. So that's what we did in our last meeting. Rafta, oh, Aqua, John's an expert on the Aqua meeting.
John gave a good presentation.
Yeah, and Opera is invited to come talk about current issues at the county. I focused primarily on infrastructure. Michael warned me it might put people asleep. I think I kept most of them awake during the discussion, but it gave us an opportunity to talk a lot about what we're doing with the airport. They had questions about IT and our transition there and facilities. So we talked about as renewal and modernization of our infrastructure. I'd say 90% of the discussion really centered around our ongoing planning efforts with the airport though.
Sounds about right.
Yeah. And as a group, they were very supportive of the process that we're going through to have that community discussion, I think.
Rafta?
Rafta, not much, except that the BRT is.
Rafta, not much, except that the BRT is going up. Ridership is like 30% up because of BRT.
Yeah, it's huge.
This is extraordinary.
What were their projections on that, do you know? I mean, has it exceeded their projections or is that what they were projecting?
Oh, yeah. Nobody, nobody mentioned a figure of 30%.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's because of the 15-minute schedule.
Yeah.
It exceeded their expectations immediately. There was standing room on the early buses, and so they substituted the older, larger buses in the morning. So it's hugely successful, and the, the challenge is what's going to happen in the future, you know? Is it going to continue to be that successful or, I don't know. Nobody really knows.
Every 10 minutes?
Yeah, I mean, the headway might change to, to that, at least at certain times.
Yeah.
So people responded to certainty of going to the bus stop and being on catch-a-bus, period. That's what I'm, and then the speed of it.
Yeah. So. Addis.
Just to comment on that, also the ridership between Aspen and Snowmass Village is way up over previous years. And when people pass the traffic jam from the airport into town, riding on the Rafta bus, it's just a huge incentive to continue riding the bus because you save so much time getting into town.
Side note, though, I will say that there's an enormous amount of traffic diverting off the highway onto Plain Plats Road, which is really problematical for people on the Plain Plats Road, for people on W slash J Hill, and for people who live in the Cemetery Lane District because all of a sudden you're getting, I was going into town this morning, I considered my road to get into town, and so when other people are poaching it. So there's a lineup of 20 cars at the stoplight.
At, at Cemetery Lane?
Yeah, so, you know, it's problematical. And that's this morning, this is after Labor Day.
Yeah. Okay, senior council.
Senior Council never meets in August, so the next meeting's coming up in September.
All right, NORTA Council?
Nothing. He already said that.
And, and he said for TPR, there's nothing. Any other board open discussion? John, you want to start?
Two, two items. I'm going to ask Phyllis, just to give you a quick update on two RFPs we have out, one on broadband and the other on radio infrastructure.
First, starting with radios, since the RFP was out and awarded to Pericle, I don't know what their full firm name is, I just called them Pericle, who had done our translator study back in 2007. The radio study is regarding two-way radio emergency services. Roden Bridge uses the system as well as to get some recommendations about 800. Currently, our Roden Bridge department cannot talk to the CDOT Roden Bridge, well, the CDOT heavy equipment operators that are on the highway because they use 800 as their radio frequency, and we do not. So we're trying to get an idea of what should our system look like, how can we improve it, how can we make sure different departments can talk to who they need to talk to, and what, what's needed to maintain the system. We found that there's a lot of agencies and using our system that don't even know they're using our system, and how do we support our infrastructure? Because it's two-way radio, you talk, you don't know that you're using a repeater on a mountaintop to talk to somebody else, and the repeaters might be through our system. So we're just trying to use this study to get us a good baseline of what do we have, where should we be going, and how do we improve it? So that's what we're looking for in that study, and they kicked off today. So they're running around, they'll go to all the mountaintop sites. We have some that are being used, some that we didn't know are being used, and some that are really inactive, which is Red Hill is one that we have. It's licensed to us, but it, right now, we don't have any equipment and we're not using it. So we'll see if that can improve some of that service area. Now, there's a lot of areas, especially Roden Bridge, when they're plowing the frying pan, where they don't have any, they have no connectivity, and there's no cell service. So you have no cell and you have no two-way radio. So they're really out there until they, they know where the spots are.
Phil, she said Red Hill or Red Mountain, isn't that?
Red.
Red Hill down in Carbon Hill?
Mm-hmm. I think it's Red Hill.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, it's not in Picking County, I know that.
Yeah.
Which we have quite a few sites that kind of just are over. And now we have an RFP that we're getting ready to release on broadband. We've been working for so long on trying to figure out how do we improve broadband as well as cellular, because I kind of see those as parallel services that are coming close, because you can get so much broadband on your phones anymore, that we don't have anyone telling us, yes, here it is, this is how you can get this done. So we decided an RFP is the only way that we're going to actually get providers to give us a plan. So it's a design and build RFP. How do we improve areas of Picking County by piece or by whole? We're trying to go at it in any way, shape, or form. There may be a provider that can do a really good job improving service up the frying pan or east of Aspen or up Maroon, but not the whole area. So we didn't want to eliminate an agency that, or a vendor that could do just a piece of it, although we said it would be benefit, it would be beneficial to your scoring in the RFP if you could provide plans for the entire county using partnerships instead of just saying, I can only do it here. So that should be coming out either this week or next week, just wanted to alert you. Rio Blanco just put their RFP out last week, and we're all part of the Northwest COG Broadband Committee that's working to improve it. So it's been great because we're all linked together and we're all sharing all this information as we're all developing it. So we really feel that what Rio Blanco gets, they'll share with us, we'll share with them, and we'll see how we can all improve it in the region. When I look at trying to get to Thomasville, people on the frying pan are going to be improved because there's no way I can get to Thomasville without going through that whole stretch of Eagle County. So Eagle County's a part of that Northwest COG group, so I'm working with their IT director, which is their representative on that group, so that he knows what we're doing and if they're willing to participate.
How is that different than the cellular tower work that we're doing?
The cellular tower pieces are, I'd say, isolated. They're filling it in. We're looking at a broader plan. I'd say American Tower may be providing some responses to it. They pretty much only deal with cellular. They don't do broadband, so looking at the Comcast's and the Century Link or Tel, I never remember which they are these days, to get real broadband into the home.
Another way to look at it, George, is when we were, and we still continue to look at the, the cell and wireless internet and broadband, what we were missing in that discussion was what they call kind of the middle mile piece, which is where's the rest of the infrastructure that you'd need to support that, the fiber, maybe microwave back halls, those sorts of things. And we thought that that may be filled in as we started looking at our radio and translator system, but as we learned, there wasn't a lot of, I mean, we learned something, and that is that we didn't actually have a lot of useful sites for cell, wireless, or broadband connectivity there. And so what this will do is take a broader approach to also be looking at fiber, looking at microwave, looking at those other media for delivering broadband services that we haven't tackled yet. So it should mesh in, you know, as Phyllis is saying, it will mesh in in areas because cellular, cell providers and wireless providers need those back hall sites. They ultimately need to get into fiber or some other medium that's going to bring that messages to those, whatever communications, the rest of the web, as it were.
Because we do have Skybeam on two of our mountaintop sites, so there's people getting broadband through that where they may not get cellular service. We've really found cellular service, they want cell towers on the valley floors because that's where they fill in. If you put them on mountaintop, they don't go to the valley floor where it's, let's see, what's it called? Fixed wireless, which is what Skybeam is. So it really has, it's fixed, it's plugged in somewhere, and then it projects a wireless signal. So the crown where Skybeam is on provides a lot of service into the whole valley there, out into Missouri Heights. I mean, when you go up on the crown, wherever you can see is where you can get broadband from, Skybeam. So we've asked them, we also have a request from Gunnison County to include Marble in our request, and we'll find out if, on a design-build RFP, maybe we'll find out what a cost might be, and then I can go to Gunnison County and say, here's what we have as a design for, for Marble. The quarry there has no connectivity. It's interesting, east of Aspen, we went and visited Wildwood School, they still have, they're using Usenet, they're using fixed wireless, they have satellite service for their broadband, and their backup is dial-up. And I hadn't heard of anyone still having dial-up, but they still have a dial-up account because they need a backup sometimes with their satellite. So we're really trying to, we're trying to hit it from absolutely every angle we can, we can use, and we'll see what we get by actually putting out an RFP and asking for proposals.
And George, what you might hear is kind of like what we heard from Lake County today. Gosh, we, we did something, we went out and we got an additional ISP provider out of it, didn't provide the connectivity. What we might find is that with addition of some dark fiber or some capital investments on our part, we can connect the dots and serve a broader area. These RFPs are just a tool to flesh out what those opportunities are and what the private sectors mine to looking at, well, what are the dots that could be connected and how could we connect them? We may or may not get something really useful out of this, and if we do, that's great. If we don't, then we know we've got more work to do.
And some of our areas may be able to qualify for federal dollars because they're in no service areas. So that'll be part of the RFP. It's really, it's an, it's an interesting structure for that business model. I, I'm amazed.
It is.
Although we do have Jack Rabbit Hill, which we have as a cell site because it's relatively low, looking at cell service for West Buttermilk and into Snowmass from that site. So that may be coming in the future. They're doing a site visit tomorrow to see what the engineers think.
I know we're running out of time, just real quick to give the board a heads up. Next week, we had a Rio Grande recycling cost-sharing discussion that we have on the agenda, and we're still going to do that. Basically, the board had, you know, during one of our landfill updates, you know, we had suggested we wanted to talk to the municipalities about cost-sharing opportunities. Basalt doesn't have a recycling center anymore that was kind of the solution on their land. Snowmass is covering all of theirs, so it's really a discussion with Aspen on the Rio Grande site. And we had talked to staff, and they had kicked back some ideas that are really more at the policy level to bring back to you guys about, you know, they, they would like to see us look at our ordinances and such if we're going to get into a cost-sharing agreement. The Daily News picked up on that today, so they may be writing a story prematurely, I think, probably a little bit ahead of our discussion, but just to give you a heads up. I think they're looking for stories today. They picked up on that. And that's all I have for open discussion.
Commissioner discussion, Rachel?
You know, we can talk about it next week, John, but I think it was when you were out, we talked about the Woody Creek post office hours becoming more limited, and then the Woody Creek Caucus, Michael informed us was going to bring us a resolution supporting their post office and keeping their hours open, which I think was emailed to us, but we've really not done anything further as a board action, a board discussion.
So, thank you, Rachel, because you did bring that up last time, and so we are making contacts with the post office to see if we can get, because during that discussion, it came up that.
Old Snowmass.
Yeah, was, was Old Snowmass going to be affected, Woody Creek, which I don't believe we've received that letter yet, at least I haven't seen it.
Well, we just, the resolution from the caucus, I know, I think it was Linda Wag sent it on.
Oh, she did send it, okay.
It might not have gone to everybody, I just, I.
So what I was looking at doing is seeing if I could get a contact within the post office to come and brief the board on all the changes that they see coming in Picking County, and then we could have a response from there. So we have gotten our names together and we're going to start doing outreach this weekend.
Thanks for the update.
Can I say something? I asked you in the post office to come and give you an update, that they came to Woody Creek and gave an update, and the update consisted of, we're giving you a choice of six hours cutback, and that was the choice. That's not really an update, so I'm not exactly sure how useful that can be, just having one federal agency tell you what they're going to do. And I think the hope for the caucus is to say, that's not good enough for a rural community. Try something different.
Well, the, the reason I was looking for an update, and this is at the board's direction really, how, how you want to have this discussion, is that I don't think there is clear understanding about what the moving parts were. We have an idea, because they came and talked to Woody Creek about the reduction in service. I think there's a question in Old Snowmass we didn't know the answer to, you know, and are there other changes coming, you know, to, to other communities in Picking County so that we could at least be aware of those?
So you're talking about the entirety of Picking County?
Correct, yeah, yeah. Then the dialogue, I think, follows from there about, you know, how do we respond to that? But wait, I, I agree with you, Mike. I do think it's going to be a pretty one-sided, probably, discussion on a presentation like that.
Yeah, it's just, they have an imperative to cut back.
Right.
And that's what they're going to do. The effect, though, is, you know, when you talk about cutback in services, Woody Creek has never had home delivery or mail, right? So that's a cutback in and of itself for the last 100 years that they've never had. Now they're talking about a cutback in hours at the post office. You know, so, so there's a lot of things in this country that are pushing this country sort of apart, and post offices tend to, at least this rural post office, tends to glue people back together. Not only do they get information from the outside world, they exchange information in amongst themselves, and it helps to bind the community together. And if you watch TV or anything like that, you know that that isn't a binding force for this kind of, but the post office is. And so it's a real major concern, and I think not just Woody Creek, but most rural post offices, that that, that binding point for their community is, is being essentially dismantled on a, on a piece-by-piece basis. And that's distressing to people who live in rural communities, very distressing. And I think government services were never viewed as something that paid back. The payback was that you created a unified country and a unified community that had services that they could depend on, and that paradigm is being undermined. And I have sympathy for the post office people, but I don't have sympathy for the, for the trend of the untine of America.
We'll have that conversation again.
Any other discussion commissioners?
I would make a motion to go into a special meeting for the purpose of discussing a resolution appointing citizen board members.
Second.
First and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so we have a resolution appointing Susan DiCampo for our citizens grant review board, Emily Esig for our financial advisory board, and Michelle Keys for our housing authority board. She's moving from a joint alternate to a reg, county regular position.
So moved.
Wasn't Emily just here?
Yes, she's official on the financial board quite yet.
She was attending today.
We have a first and a second, any discussion? See, none of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and I will adjourn our special meeting.
Does anyone want to ride or need to ride over to the airport?
Does anyone want to ride or need to ride over to the airport?